Okay. Uh, roll call, Jared.
Yes, sir. Tammy Byne?
Here.
Cindy Brod?
Here.
Julie, Martine Pukuro?
Present.
Mr. Harley?
Here.
Mr. Kerr?
Present.
Mrs. Lieber?
Present.
Dr. Rinn?
Here.
Dr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Schroed?
Here. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. Um, I do not have a board president's message, uh, but I understand we may have some public comment. Okay. Ira Redd, if you would please.
Good evening. Is this on? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I can't hear very well. Um, first, I want to give honor to God in Jesus' name, to the superintendent, president of the board and all members.
Everyone present.
Um, I'm a concerned parent. Uh, over the years, I have observed racial intimidation escalating from name-calling, um, children being called niggers, to writing on school property vocal racial messages. Um, and, uh, we want to address this issue. Um, we also want to kind of put in, you know, just other, um, children that identify themselves outside of the box in our community, um, and how they're being, um, name-called and mistreated in our schools. Um, our children are being heard with meaning, dehumanizing cruel words in an environment that is designed to nurture and respect, to inspire and help direct. So, um, again, I, you know, I don't mean to offend anyone, but there's, um, the word being called nigger, Mexican bitch, burnt cheeseburger, black monkey, to name a few. So, I ask you, how can they learn to their fullest potential? This name-calling impacts their mental health, such as self-esteem, and it robs them of their opportunity to learn to their fullest potential. So, imagine having to take a biology or algebra test and being called some of those names. Filling to fear, anger, hopelessness can impact their learning assessment. So, I gave a, um, article to the president of the board and to the superintendent to look over, and there's a lot of information out there on how racism harms children. It's by Claire McCarthy, medical, uh, doctor from Harvard Health Publishing, uh, Harvard Medical School. And, um, I pulled her article up, but there are other articles out there that is backing what, you know, um, I'm talking about today. So, this is what, um, we're suggesting, and I, and I'm not the expert. This is all, um, I've never been before, bored before, so this is all new for me, but I am a concerned, um, citizen here in Indiana, and I love Indiana, so for all people, not just the specific group. Um, that letter is be sent out to all students and their parents or guardians reviewing the handbook, because the handbook lays it out so well, um, about the harassing in different areas. Um, so maybe reiterating that, that the student handbook policy on harassment and bullying, uh, racial slurs, um, and then also maybe possibly outlining, you know, some information or letting the offenders know that, um, you know, the severity of this offense, you know, they can possibly be, you know, suspended, expelled, something a little harsher to maybe deter the behavior. Um, also, and I know this is already in act, is multicultural assemblies, awareness days, uh, with diverse, um, guest speakers, um, it's important that our children see, um, a diverse array of people in professional, um, positions, you know what I mean? Uh, they need to see that. Um, and then that all staff attend multicultural training, at least annually. Um, and yes, there is one coming up, uh, April 19th, and, um, I will be attending, you know, that. Uh, so, I'm saying this school board takes a village. We all need each other. So, we're asking for your support and your help in this matter, combating the racism in our schools.
Thank you, Ira.
Good God.
Um, normally, um, you know, Ira has been working with the superintendent and, um, is kind of the spokesman, so normally it's a three-minute warning, but we did grant Ira a few extra minutes to be sure to complete her, her, her thoughts there, but I do want to try to keep it down to the, uh, uh, the, the three minutes.
I apologize.
That's okay. No, 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 it's fine. Uh, Ta- Tanya Reed, Ira?
Yeah.
Hannah, I'm sorry.
Surely the microphone.
My work, thank you very much.
It's mama. Hello, I am Tamara. I'm in chem- I'm, I am a 10th grade student at Indiana Area Senior High School. First, I would like to say thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. I'm here to talk about the usage of racial slurs at the school, specifically the use of the N-word. I feel there are little to no repercussions for kids who use these slurs. Myself and many other students have been called the N-word multiple times. Additionally, other racial slurs have been used against us as well. We all feel like nothing has been done about it. We feel it's being swept under the rug. I feel as though if there were steeper punishments for anyone using such slurs, it would deter people from using them in the first place. I asked multiple students what they felt a proper punishment would be, and collectively I found out most would like to see at least one day of in-school suspension, and if they use it again, a day of out-of-school suspension after that expulsion. Many students I asked said they fear that even if we do have this in place, the school won't follow through with it. I hope that the punishments will be followed through with. The use of these terms is very damaging to our mental health, and it is tough to be in this building for eight hours each day and be called such ten terrible things. It is written on our desks in the bathroom stalls and is set in passing in between classes. While we are no longer children, we still struggle with handling things in a mature way. We expect that the adults in this building are making sure that we are in a safe and healthy learning environment. The adults in this building should not be pushing this issue aside. I feel the school should take further actions about this and enforce the punishments that they have in place for this, so we can overall have a better learning, not even bother a minute, a minute for us young adults.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Misty Noko?
I don't even need a mic. I have a big mic.
No, no. No, no.
This is the microphone so that it goes only in your mic.
Oh, I see. I see.
Yeah, it's not actually helping us at all.
I don't. My name is Misty Noko. I'm here on behalf of the Indiana County PA Inclusion Initiative and IUP Inclusion Initiative, two organizations that I founded to prevent and eliminate bullying in the community. We have seen or heard about bullying across the county that has targeted a variety of groups, LGBTQ, people of color, foster children, and people with disabilities. Um, this is an, this issue of the N-word at Indiana Area School District seems to be the most pervasive. It just keeps coming up. River Hawn, my own child was bullied in the Indiana School District. Um, he attempted suicide three times. Many years have passed. He has returned and is thriving as a senior heading to IUP with a major of psychology. But not every bullying story ends that way. I believe that the school district needs to bring back a comprehensive anti-bullying program like Olvea's. In our organization, we have a grant writer and an Olvea's trainer who would be happy to assist with that effort. At the least, we are asking that you request trainings that are specific to bullying, which would be used as training for staff, teachers, as well as adults with interactions at our school, like PTA, booster organizations, and coaches. We have several agencies that we are partnering with that could provide this training. Our main partner is Aaron. Another is the Alice Paul House. And you can go home and you could do nothing. That is an option for everybody sitting in this room. But if you do that, and the next escalation in this bullying is that a student endures a major assault on your property, or successfully commits suicide as a result of the bullying at one of your schools, you guys will regret every moment from this one until the time that that happens. Please, I beg of you, take action and protect our children before this escalates further. Thank you.
Thank you, Misty. Okay, that was the last of the, uh, public comment. IAEA or Ask Me?
Done tonight, Mr. President. This is, uh, Paul McHugh. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Paul. Okay, SGA?
Um, uh, I was talking about, uh, a few meetings ago, our plans for prom this year. It's to be posted on the 30th. I'm sure you're all glad to hear. Uh, our COVID restrictions right now are pretty loose, so, uh, we're looking to move forward with that pretty, uh, unproblematically. Um, I also wanted to, uh, give a big shout-out to our leadership. I'm sure most of you are aware, and I know we invited, uh, the school board, Mr. Vukovich, uh, to come to our mini-thon. Um, and it was a really, really great event. Uh, student government was able to donate to it, and we were able to raise $64,000 and counting. We had money come in pretty consistently for the following week, uh, to help childhood cancer. So, that's a very amazing thing. It's the, uh, greatest amount that our school district has raised so far, and I think that's just pretty important to acknowledge.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody from STUKA here? Okay, nothing? Your superintendent's report. Mike, what's going on?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I apologize for everyone here. My voice usually doesn't sound like this, so, uh, I apologize. A couple of things. I, I'd like to respond to some of the public comment here this evening. Um, I appreciate everyone coming forward. I appreciate everyone issuing their concerns, and I want to be clear on what we're doing to respond. Tonight, you're going to see three different actions taken from this board, which I'll defend and give a lot of credit to, because they're taking us quite seriously. Number one, you're going to see a resolution tonight that denounces the type of behavior that has been occurring in our schools, um, over the last several weeks, and we want to work to correct and create a positive school environment. Number two, we also drafted a letter to our families, much like you requested, Ms. Redd, about the general need to be good to one another, be kind, and treat people with dignity and respect. And number three, you're also going to see a motion tonight, ladies and gentlemen, that creates the Subcommittee on Positive School Climate, where we're going to work with parents and stakeholders to see what we can do to continuously improve our school environment. About last week, I think, Ms. Redd, maybe on Wednesday or Tuesday, we met?
Yes.
Uh, we had a meeting, and we went through, discussed about what we're doing here in the district to really take some action to make sure we have a positive school climate. Um, I know we had some people speak about the local partnerships, but let me tell you more globally about what we're doing here in the district. Number one, first and foremost, we are partnering up with Attorney General's Office. Uh, they are coming in next week in, in collaboration with the Department of Justice to work at the implementation and planning behind the Spear Program. Additionally, we are working with the Pennsylvania School Board Association, do ongoing development for our leadership as a team. And we're also working with, um, creating a local partnership here with Dr. Victoria Watson about how we continue to help and improve school climate. So, uh, the point is, there's a lot of work to be done, and we're heading towards doing that. We're heading towards seeking seriousness, um, and it's something that matters to us, and something that's going to be done. Reason why we didn't send out the, uh, the family letter as of yet is because we wanted to take action on the resolution tonight. Uh, this board takes these things quite seriously. We made them aware of some issues together, and one thing I'm most proud of is everyone working together. Uh, Ms. Redd, it was a pleasure meeting with you and the other, uh, I think, Miss Sue? And, and Missy?
Yes.
And talking about some of our concerns, and we're going to continue to work forward. So, I'm really proud of the work the board's doing here to, uh, to take this quite seriously. Additionally, um, there will be tomorrow, I am going on the radio station at 8 o'clock. There's a nice announcement that we're, a local, um, a local community member is doing for some excellence, recognizing some excellence in teachers and students. I really can't go beyond that, because the, the press release goes tomorrow at 8:00 AM, so I'm quite proud of that. Additionally, uh, one thing that we want to make the public aware is, as a result of the action that Congress has taken, the free reduced lunch, uh, applications will now be required to go, uh, to be in effect for 2022, 23 school year. As you know, under federal legislation, uh, lunches were free for all students the past two years. Congress has made a decision to end that, and that what we're going to encourage our families to do, and I included my report, is to take time to complete the free and reduced lunch application. And I want to assure our families that these applications remain confidential. Uh, the last thing this board wants to do is exploit anyone or to shame anyone, because everyone's going through tough times. But this is a service that's available to our families, meaning they're receiving their free or reduced lunches. So, we're going to encourage our families to complete that. We can't control what happened at the federal level. All I can control is our response at the local level, and that's going to be to encourage our families to make use of this lunch, free reduced lunch application. Therefore, kids can go, um, not hungry. You know, we talked a lot about the mental impacts of trauma and the impacts of, uh, racism, impacts of discrimination. We also need to talk about the impacts of food scarcity. That can impact kids just as well. And this is something this board's committed to, to make sure our kids have hot meals, uh, to the best of our abilities. So, we're going to encourage our families to make sure they go and complete that application as well. Additionally, uh, Mr. President, our digital media production students, uh, were recognized. We have a couple of students in my report that I'll email to families tomorrow that placed in the local contest here. We have a first-place finish, some third-place finish, and, uh, some honorable mentions, so we're quite proud of that. And we also had East Pike and Horace Mann had a PTA family stem night that I recognized in the, um, in my report. And then lastly, what we have here is on April 28th is National Take Your Child to Work Day, and I put some information that helps families determine if they want to take their child to work that day, and how the district will proceed moving forward. And that's all I have at this time. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mike, thank you. Uh, Ron, you're online tonight. Uh, how about a solicitor's report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I can't recall if I spoke about this, but the fair funding lawsuit, uh, that was in Harrisburg ended in March. Uh, the Supreme Court heard final oral arguments on that. Uh, the question that keeps coming out is, when are we going to get a decision? And, uh, I'm just here to update the, really, everyone to say, I don't foresee a decision coming out, uh, for months, uh, if not almost a year's time, because they have to really brief the entire, they have to do a briefing schedule. They have to make sure that everything is heard, uh, and added into the record, but it could have a sweeping and significant effect on public school districts if that goes through. So, again, we're going to keep, uh, public schools updated each step of the way, but at this point in time, I don't have any, uh, real update as it relates to that case. Like I said, it could be months, if not almost up to a year down the road. So, uh, again, we're just looking to see what that's going to do to some of the districts and taking a look at equity, uh, poverty areas, uh, and that spending rate and what it looks like for, you know, educational, um, means for those districts. So, that's all from my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, Ron, everybody's really curious as to what's, what's going to happen there, because it could impact a lot of us here in Indiana County.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, under presentations, we have a, uh, a short presentation to make. Uh, Tammy and Josie, if you would, uh, please front and center with Mike. Um, and I'll let them explain what the presentation is all about.
I'll defer to Miss Blake, so you don't have to hear the screechy voice.
This award is from the Indiana Free Library for the Indiana Area School District and their continued support of the Indiana Free Library. Our library is supported by White Township, Armstrong Township, and Shalota Borough, as well as Indiana Borough. All of those comprise the Indiana Area School District. The school district gives annually to the library, and we wanted to show our appreciation. Not only are we giving this plaque, but we're gaining Mrs. Black, because if you know, at the last, a couple of board meetings ago, it was decided that a board member from Indiana School District would serve on our board. So, we welcome her, and we, we are very proud to give this to the district. So, thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Mrs. Black.
Okay. Thank you all for that. We're down to section three, approval of the minutes in the agenda. I also would like to request that where possible, throughout the rest of the agenda, we, we do as many of the items on a consent basis. So, may I have a motion to approve the minutes in the agenda? Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on the agenda of the minutes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, board reports. There is no report on the ICTC. We didn't have a meeting. I believe it's scheduled for next week. Um, Aaron?
Um, we had no meeting this month, but it looks like next month, we're having a, 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 we're having a thing on the 28th. So, it's going to be a recognition dinner of different districts in the board that's been supporting that.
The annual, the annual, uh, dinner, yes?
Yes, sorry.
Great. And if anybody on the board that hasn't made their reservations, please see a niece, uh, so that you can attend if you so desire. All right, Tammy, outreach committee?
Um, we haven't met this month, but we're going to meet next month, and, um, the, I'm looking forward to it.
Okay. Under 4.4, creation of a subcommittee.
Second.
Second. Moved in second? Okay, all those in, oh, discussion, comments, or questions?
Is it going to be a subcommittee of the outreach, or?
What, what we're going to do is, we're going to work, um, work on a forum where people can submit their names to be a part of it. Um, I think our actions have to be followed by our words. I think our principles have to be followed in practice. So, what I'm proposing this subcommittee does is work with some parent and community stakeholders about how we can continuously improve school climate. Um, we have to work through the details of how we're going to select that, but I gave Ms. Redd my word that that's something that was going to be important, that we were going to take seriously. Uh, but I don't have all details about this point. At this point, I'm asking for permission to, um, have the committee, and then I'll go through details about how we're going to nominate people to bring that forward. Uh, and the reason why, let me explain to the public, um, dialogue between the public and the board, that just doesn't happen, right? The, the meetings are in front of the public, not with the public. But we think some of this topic deserves your time, deserves your respect, and we need to have conversations. So, we want to do that. This subcommittee will allow us to have those conversations. Not more, not just once, more than once, right? Because this is not something where we have to be honest with each other, is resolved in one meeting. This is something we have to continue in conversation, so the subcommittee allows us to have dialogue. And hopefully, Ms. Redd, that you were pleased with the last meeting you had, because we spent, I think, about an hour and a half, two hours, really walking through some issues. Now, more work to be done, but that's what this subcommittee will allow us to do.
Well, come here.
I'd, I'd also like to move.
I think what Tammy's question was, was it's a subcommittee of which, which of the major committees? I, I think I heard her volunteer the outreach.
I'm a volunteer. Why are you there? I'm Misty.
We can do that.
Okay.
Well, it makes sense that it was part of, you know, that it'd be part of your, your outreach and part of your community reports.
Okay, so it has my full support, and I've requested yours, sir.
Okay. Further questions, comments, or discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Tom, academic and extracurricular?
Okay, this is going to be long and involved. So, the community report, we did have a meeting on the, on the fourth. Uh, we heard from the rifle team, a coach, um, that there's two students, uh, two students from Marion Center like to, like to be on our team. We have a policy in place that allows that. He has space on his team. He did want to emphasize that the people who will go to the matches are the ones that shoot the best. So, some Marion Center kid can go to a match, and an Indiana kid can stay home. And we're okay with that. We have the space, and it's, it's good for the kids. Um, and the, and the committee recommended that this be approved. We talked about several driver options, um, and, uh, most of them involved, uh, finding some pair educators. Um, and, uh, we recommended that the, the board, that, that we start down this path without knowing exactly where we're going to end up. We're trying to, to reach more kids at a, at a, at a, at a fair price, um, and figure out how we make more impact as drivers. Um, the summer school is, um, up and, uh, off and running, um, trying to get the people lined up. Um, there's a motion to, to authorize the hiring of summer school, um, faculty members, um, on the, on the, um, basically, we're looking at duplicating what we did last summer. Um, we had, uh, some discussion with the PA, um, honors program at the senior high school, and, uh, um, they were proud to announce that we could do this program without any cost to district. And it was, uh, it was a, uh, it'd be a braid, it'd be an honor for, for students who are interested in foreign, in foreign languages. Oh, we talked about the social media impact on self-esteem. We talked about an es- we had esports presentation, which would be a high school team, um, um, in a, in a, in a, in a format, a four-team for- in a team format, um, where we authorized the administration to keep investigating that. That's not ready to come to the board yet. Um, we had the, um, summer, the summer camp plan for the, uh, for the middle school. Uh, we had a, we had a short social studies update, um, but not real much meat on that yet. Uh, we had the Horace Mann and the Eisenhower came in with the first Lego League, League, um, which they're asking for $2,100 to start this thing. Uh, Walter volunteered that, uh, if they could get more kids involved, that we, we'd pay for that too. It was very exciting stuff. Between, between esports and the Lego League, I'm going back to school. And that's, that's all, that's what I have. So, we have motions. Let me see. Can I take all these together, or do we need to just split them out here?
Let's do 5.6 separately.
Yeah, we'll do that. Um, okay, so, um, um, let me move, uh, prin- the principal internship, 5.2, uh, 5.3, the graduate assistant interns, 5.4, the global honors program, 5.5, the rifle team co-op, and 5.7, the school calendar revisions. Can I take all those together? So, move.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on any of those motions? Mike, is there anything you would like to add?
Nope. I think Mr. Harley summed it up well. I think we're good, sir.
Okay. All those in favor of those motions, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carry.
So, 5.6, resolution. Resolution supporting the development of an equitable and inclusive school climate by the board of directors of the Indiana Area School District.
And do we have a second? Tamara?
She's second.
Second.
Okay.
And then I'll start reading the resolution. Whereas this resolution is meant to empower our school community to build upon the groundwork laid by our board in the areas of equity and inclusivity in light of local and national events and to amplify our work. This resolution was drafted with student, employee, community, and board input. Our district is fundamentally committed to the ideal that all students, regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, language ability, political ideology, disability, or other entities receive the same opportunity for education and achievement. We reaffirm our commitment to educating all students while listening to all voices equally in order to develop a community that values and recognizes the importance of diversity, diplomacy, and dialogue.
Whereas, we must advocate to advance the civil rights of all and cultivate a positive school environment necessary to meet the needs of all students in our care. Each and every one of our students deserve to be seen and to be affirmed. We will work tirelessly to address every injustice reported and make the necessary changes to policy if the need arises to ensure their safety and the quality of education is maintained.
Whereas, we recognize that discrimination has no place in our schools and society. The safety of our students, like the safety of all in our community, is a fundamental priority. We recognize that language that intimidates, demeans, or dehumanizes is an infringement on an individual's ability to live freely and with the sense of safety necessary for a positive and effective educational environment.
Whereas, we are gratified by the willingness of many in our school community to promote respectful, inclusive, and equitable actions toward others. We are nevertheless deeply concerned by some of the instances of divisive rhetoric in recent months that have occurred in our schools. These situations have clearly highlighted the challenges that our students, families, staff, and community face today.
Whereas, we seek to better educate ourselves and our community on the impact of discrimination, as well as to understand our role in resolving the inequities that exist. Through ongoing professional development and opportunities for honest dialogue, we hope to build partnerships with students and community stakeholders focused on overcoming these barriers to create opportunities to ensure that each child has the tools and supports needed to thrive.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Indiana Area School Board reaffirms our collective responsibility to foster an equitable and inclusive environment for every student, staff, member, parent, and community member. To this end, we will continue utilizing and listening, feedback opportunities provided by our student, parent, community advisory boards to help shape our course of action. feedback opportunities provided by our student, parent, community advisory boards to help shape our course of action. The IASD Board of Directors is committed to developing and empowering student voice and leadership. We will continue to actively create additional avenues and opportunities for students, faculty and staff to share concerns with assuredness that the said concerns will be heard, investigated and addressed. We commit to using our rule as, as, as school board directors to recognize, respond and speak out against injustice and inequity in our school community. In support of this goal, the Indiana Area School Board reaffirms its commitment to providing all students with a positive school climate built upon respect, dignity and kindness in striving to achieve our district's mission to provide supportive and engaging educational experiences that prepare students to be productive citizens who positively impact society.
Thank you all for reading that. Jared Rollcall, both of you.
Amy, Mike?
Yes.
Cindy Nubron?
Yes.
Julia Demarkey Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Harley?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mrs. Leaper?
Yes.
Dr. Ray?
Yes.
Dr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Schrod?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you all again. Policy and personnel, Cindy, you're up.
Okay, we had a policy and personnel meeting earlier this evening. We went over some staffing situations that are, we're just starting to discuss. We talked about a, the athletic director and advertising that position on an anticipated vacancy. That's still a conversation that's going on. Various support staff for different positions in the, in the buildings and our summer school positions, which we will be talking about and voting on this evening. So, other than that, then we have motions. We can do, I mean, I can take all of them as consent and just read a, a little bit of the, of the description and then I'm sure we may have some discussion on some clarification, which we can do.
Absolutely.
Motion 6.2, resignation of support staff. We've got two people who will be resigning. One is an administrative assistant and one is a paraeducator. Summer learning camp positions, this is a summary of the positions that we need to man for the, the summer learning camp. That's a makeup camp to help students get caught up and stay caught up through the summer. The summer school positions that we will be using for the high school summer school courses for credit recovery and credit advancement. The employment of a paraeducator, and this one I will read, based upon the recommendation of administration. Angela Crusan, be employed as a paraeducator effective April 12th, 2022 at an hourly rate of $12 per hour, subject to a 90-day probation period and receipt of updated clearances and Act 168 forms be approved. And several extra duty, extra pay assignments that the board approves the following extra duty, extra pay assignments for the 2022-2023 school year. The senior high cross-country head coach with a salary of $6,6,128 would be Candace Lockard. The senior high varsity cheerleading head coach for the fall and the senior high varsity cheerleading head coach for the winter. Both of those would be at a salary of $2,598, once for the fall, once for the winter. And that would be a new employee Savannah Fromkin.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second on, on those motions. Do we have questions, comments or discussion on any of them?
I have a question on 6.6.
Okay, Tom.
Mike, during the policy personnel, we talked about the posting Andy and the extra duty, I'm sorry, and the paraeducators. Does that need to be a motion?
If you wanna make it tonight, we can make, move on, I'll defer to you.
I'd like to make it an amendment to 6.6 if we can do that, so that those things get moving ahead.
Ron, can you weigh in with the new sunshine law we have?
Yeah, and this is what I described last meeting under Act 65 that was just passed this year. So the sunshine law requires that if we're gonna add something last second, we're gonna have to have a real verbose conversation about why it's being added last second. Kind of have the superintendent give a report as to why it's necessary to move or act upon without previous notice. And then we're gonna have to allow the public an opportunity to weigh in and comment on that specific agenda item as well. And, and if it does pass, we will then have to post that addition within 24 hours so that everyone is able to see it.
I think what we could do is there, there anticipated vacancy, maybe what I could do, Ron, if you're okay with it, Ron, we can move forward the board agenda as is and approve it at a later meeting. Ron, is that okay?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. That would work fine.
Ron, a question though. Does this restrict our ability though to amend a motion that's on the table that we've advertised?
Or change a motion?
No, it, it, it's just, we have to explain why we're making this modification without, without notification, because we are adding to it. We're not necessarily modifying an existing motion as, as I see it, correct? We, this isn't something we've discussed or is in discussion on the motion.
It was discussed, I can, that's correct. It is not on agenda. This would be entirely new motion. Yes, that is correct.
It is an entirely new motion.
Yeah, so again, you can, to answer the question, Mr. President, you can modify mo, you can modify a motion to add, subtract or, or make some changes to it because it's been advertised already, so the public is aware of what it's going to be as long as the modification may be, you know, ever slight. But if you're adding a new motion, then that's a requirement of action.
So, so for example, under 6.4, summer school positions, if somebody wanted to amend that motion and say, we need three student mentors instead of two, that would be acceptable without having to go through the whole rigmarole again. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct, because they would have noticed, they would have known that this was up there for a discussion piece previous to this meeting. So yes, you're correct.
But the rigmarole here is not much similar than what we were doing before. We would always, if we had a new motion, we would always have a public comment immediately following that motion.
Yes, absolutely.
My concern is, is that, is that if we don't get these things moving, that we don't fill these positions and, and we don't, and we don't get, we don't get top shelf candidates. So my, I would prefer that we move these things forward unless, unless the board doesn't want, unless I couldn't get a second of the motion. Since it's now a separate motion, I'd like to add that motion to this, but I guess we can wait then. We can, we can take what Cindy's proposed here, then we can, then I can make a motion.
Yeah, you have two options. Either we can bring it up or I can do anticipated vacancies and then bring it back to next meeting and have it formally approved.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, I'm hearing a lot of rumor.
Okay.
Well, I don't think it's gonna slow the process down.
No, because it's anticipated.
What you're proposing is not gonna speed up what he's gonna do.
Mike would have this on the, on the, because that next tomorrow.
Okay, further questions or discussion on any of these motions? Hearing none. Tamara, go ahead, please.
Just real quick, as Cindy mentioned and we discussed a little bit last week or maybe two weeks ago, I think it's important to try to get some recovery students to pass before summertime, especially in gym and maybe female consumer science and some other classes where, where we really can support the students for, just for their, for their well-being.
Okay, further questions, comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions carry. Carry, buildings and transportation.
Okay, 7.1, committee meeting report. I did that at the last meeting. We have not had a meeting since then. 7.2, the update on Eisenhower Elementary. We had two meetings last week with Buchanan Horn, one on April 6th, and we had that at the Indiana Borough Office. We met with the zoning and, and planning people there at a very productive meeting. We wanted to meet them, introduce Buchanan Horn to them. We had some specific questions for them, different things, and they're working on a couple of clarifications. And we did that in, in advance so that we hopefully can Buchanan Horn will make a better submission the first time, since they'll know more what's going on. Then on April 7th, the next day, Buchanan Horn came out to the office here, met with the admin staff again to further drill down and, and narrow down what we want the new Eisenhower school to look like. Next, well, this week, April 13th, they're gonna do a virtual meeting with the administration on a follow-up from last week's meeting with some schematics of some options of, you know, hopefully two or three options of what Eisenhower basically outside will look like, including all the needed rooms and that sort of thing. And then next Monday night, the 18th, will be my next building and grounds meeting. And we hope to bring those two or three options to that meeting and come out of that meeting with one. So we can then keep Buchanan Horn moving forward, so.
Okay, Gary, thank you.
Before you leave, we made any progress on the environmental remediation in that building?
Yes, Chaney is working on it.
Yeah, Chaney has reached out to AGX, who's a company that typically use to come in and do another reassessment, make sure the report is up to date, and we are hoping after the report is up to date to, they can bring back quotes to, to some abatement work after that.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, Julia, your turn.
Thank you. We did not meet tonight, but we are gonna meet after your meeting on Monday night, so this is a change, correct? Do I have that right?
Yes.
So this is a change in schedule, so we're not rushed through our meeting so that we can take a good look at the budget. There's a few more items, and then that will mean the following week, we will not have a meeting. So we know the next Monday night it's 6:30, so you have an hour.
Not too bossy there, Terry.
Right, and that's fine. I, I try to run my meetings. I hate meetings that don't start on cuts.
Right, I do too, I do too.
The other thing though that reminded me at my meeting next Monday night too, will be the last of the brainstorming for the use of Horace Mann. So again, get that out to the public and, and we want more ideas about it.
Yeah, we wanna try to get our numbers stacked up as, you know, as much as we can, so you'll be nice to follow on you. So we'll get a better list of what we're, what we're talking about. But we have an important motion, motion tonight on the agenda about the ICTC. I see Jared there, I'm gonna raise this up a little bit, 7, 1.75%.
Well, that is the overall increase in their budget. Indiana is seeing just over a 10% increase in our, in our share of the overall budget.
Trying to soften that a little bit.
While some districts are seeing decreases, but it, you know, we, ICTC did a great job of keeping the overall budget to a small increase. But Indiana, and I, you know, I don't think it's a bad thing, has seen a significant increase in our overall attendance at ICTC over the past couple of years. And part of the district's share is based on a formula that takes into account both the overall enrollment in grades 10, 11 and 12 at the high school, which we have seen an increase over the last couple of years. We are about to see a decrease in the enrollment at the high school as our largest class in the entire district is now graduating this year. So we'll, we'll see probably anywhere between 30 and 50 kids drop next year in our enrollment at the high school based on just all grades moving up. But it doesn't mean we'll see an immediate decrease in our ICTC number.
So Jared, to clarify, there's, there's two, two moving factors here. One is the total enrollment at the high school, which is gonna start falling off. And the other is the number of high school students who are enrolling at the ICTC specifically, and that number has increased.
Yes, yes, so our three-year average for both enrollment at our high school and the ICTC has increased, which is why we as a district are seeing such a significant increase in our share of the operating budget of ICTC. But I mean, hopefully that number and enrollment at ICTC continues, because I think that's certainly a good thing. But we will see the factor of overall enrollment at the high school. We'll see that average decrease over the next couple of years as we don't have another class coming up that is near that. The 200 and, I think it's almost 250 kids, maybe 235 at the high school right now that will be graduating this year, so.
How many are you projecting to go to the ICTC next year, do you have any idea?
I believe their enrollment, correctly from Ron Miss McWay, is right around 90 some kids this year is the enrollment. Maybe a little over that. Okay, right now, our, our average projected, which is a three-year, so it has been increasing, is 93.6. We are the second largest contributor or have the second largest enrollment at ICTC. Maybe now we may be over, we may have passed Marion Center at this point.
So, you know, they seem to have gotten everything in hand and they're sticking to the, to the disciplined budget.
They, they have an excellent, I don't know whether she's technically the business manager, but they've got an excellent gal up there that Dale Kirsch helped to, to train. And, and she's really, at least everything I can see in the board meetings when she gives her report has, has, really has her, her act together and, and has a good handle on what's, what's happening with their budget.
So you feel confident with this?
Yeah.
Anything else, Jared, you wanna add?
No, the business managers did, as a, from all seven ascending schools did meet and reviewed the budget along with the business manager there a couple of weeks ago, so we support the budget as well.
Yeah, the only other motion are the bills approved. Nothing unusual there. I didn't see anything unusual. Lots of charter school bills going out.
Nope, we're gonna continue to work on the formatting of the bills to try.
Yeah, I like it. I like what you're doing. Okay, I think we can, let's take this separately. I move that the current bills be.
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions on current bills? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
This is the 2022-23 Indiana County Technology Budget submitted for the board's information is the 22-2023 Indiana County Technology Center proposed budget in the total amount of $7,175,403. This represents an overall increase of 1.76% from the last year's budget, or the 2021-22 budget. The exact amount to be paid by the district will be determined by enrollment. That the Board of the IASD, a member of the Indiana County Technology Center, approved the proposed budget of the operating committee for the fiscal year July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023 in the amount of $7,175,403.
Moved in second. Questions, comments or discussion on the ICTC budget? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
It's great we're getting that much in the world.
What's that?
It's great we're getting that.
It's about, it's gonna be about $90,000 increase on that. You'll have that for the budget, I hope so.
Yeah, it's already factored into our.
So you've been factoring that in all along or just recently?
We had our meeting with ICTC, right, beginning of March possibly, so the last budget update that was given at the March, it was already in there, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to the closing. There are no discussion items. Is there any public comment on agenda items? Once, twice, thrice? Okay, we had some enclosures, some conference resumes and enrollment report. Ron, would you mind giving the notice of the executive session?
Yes, Mr. President. We discussed pending litigation on the Eisenhower fire damage claim. Personnel as noted on, enlisted on the agenda and then an update on teacher negotiations.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Our next meeting will be tentatively scheduled April the 25th to discuss general purposes. Our next committees are Buildings and Grounds on April the 18th. And again, I wanna give a shout out to the public. There's two key items that will occur during that meeting. One is a review of the Eisenhower concept drawings and plans. And the second is our last brainstorming on potential uses for Horace Mann. And then we have an audit and finance committee meeting that same night. The primary goal of that meeting will be to discuss the budget, and we're considering it to be a budget workshop. That concludes that part of it. May I have a motion to adjourn? Moved in second, we stand adjourned. Thank you.